Yeah, one second, sorry.
Maybe you have a room call please? Douglas B.
Here.
Andrew Brockway.
Here.
Kathy Buckley.
Here.
Michael Hagenhorn.
Here.
Holden Lehman.
Here.
Adam Aaron.
Here.
Maxine.
Here.
Hollings Stone.
Here.
Cameron Kuchar.
Here.
It's resolved that the superintendent of schools recommends to the Board of Education to approve the agenda. May I have a motion, please?
A motion.
Thank you.
Second.
Holden seconds. Any questions or discussion?
Yes, I'd like to ask person the court order if the two items that are listed on the order are going to be removed from the agenda tonight.
Um, I've asked you several times what specifically is on the court order that you would like us to remove from the agenda, but you still have not shared it with me.
I'm not your attorney, so you'd have to consult with an attorney. I don't want to give you legal advice. It's clear in the space what needs to be removed from the agenda.
It, it is actually not clear because I've read it and I can't figure out what...
I'll read it.
Side conversations, this is not allowed.
Dan, you're not the board president.
I've talked to the captain, she is the board president. Yeah, just for point, it's not...
That his, that his request that we...
Ed, it's not, appointment isn't for school business executive, it's for business manager. School business manager? I don't know.
This is for...
To your attention, Ed.
Alright.
So if you want to risk being content of court, he knows the person's meeting.
Alright, that's terrific. I am, um, let's see. I am motioning for a recess. Um, we will preferably reconvene at about five minutes of seven. I apologize for the delay in the beginning of this meeting. Um, we need to recess for, to wait for legal advice and for caucusing on this because we obviously have only had possession of this for a few minutes. So I think we as, I think we thoroughly need to read it to understand what you have presented to us. Um, may I have a motion for recess, please?
Motion.
Second.
Thank you.
Discussion?
And...
Discussion.
Discussion or...
Yeah, I'd like, why don't we, just in course of efficiency, um, why don't we set those two items aside and keep them in there, in a minute, for now.
Mm-hmm.
That way we can continue with the rest of the items in the meeting as part of efficiency and by then counsel will be here. How we can just continue going, you know what I mean?
Um...
I'm not saying pulling it out of the agenda.
Right, you're saying table.
Just take, no, take it out of the consent agenda. Put it in the consent agenda and keep it at the end, at the end of the agenda. Maybe this time.
How do you do that and still protect the confidentiality of the situation?
You're gonna use on the minutes, or on the agenda?
I think, I think for concern for confidentiality, um, that we should consider waiting for legal representation to arrive. He's hit bad weather.
Okay.
Um, he is on his way. It allow us, a recess will allow us, if he's here during his scheduled time, it allows us about 10 minutes to figure out what's going on.
Is there any way to, can we start with presentations somehow? Um, how do we do this?
So, I think it's important to note that one of the things he wants pulled from the agenda is not on the agenda and the other piece that he wants pulled from the agenda isn't on the agenda, but something similar to it is on the agenda.
No idea, okay.
And I'd just like to clarify based on Mr. Manix's results that the judge knows of the two people, life of the job.
Could you please, excuse me, could you speak up because I can't hear?
The superintendent is referencing a...
The microphone, please.
The superintendent is referencing an individual on, or a position on the agenda. Upon speaking with the judge this afternoon, he knows both of the individuals and has assured me that both of them are stricken, but of course if you want to wait for Doug and risk the entire board being in contempt of the court order, that's fine.
Just again, for the record, one of those items is not on the agenda. It's not there. So we don't have to worry about that. It's not, not present. The other one is similar. It's not school business executive, it's the school business manager. And then the rest of the documents speaks for itself.
So I have a motion and a second to go on to recess? Second, who's second is it?
No, those two.
Yeah, I thought it was Mike.
Mike.
Oh, sorry, that, that, it was, um, Andy and Mark. Being that this is handed to us minutes before the meeting, um, and it is a legal document, I think as a board we need to play it safe and wait for legal representation to come. And we'll have a brief discussion on how to proceed. I'm not really sure why it wasn't put in an email in advance like we've asked before.
It was signed at 5:15 PM by Judge Mark Powers.
It's okay to let us know you're ahead of time, just so...
I did, I said that I was planning on filing an Article 78 proceeding in an email to you and the entire board and Mr. Manix on Sunday.
Yes, um, that's about the fourth time you've done that.
Well, by not taking me seriously, I actually took the step this time.
Okay. Um, we have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? We're going into a recess until hopefully six, about 6:55. Hopefully Doug will be here and we will take it from there. All in favor?
Aye.
Any nays, any obstines? Motion carries. Sorry, I really think we need to play a second. I know. Yeah, we're in recess, you're in there.
We're in recess. Can we, can we, it's hard to have a conversation.
I don't know if you've heard of Kathy Brockway, especially it's hard to...
Hey, appreciate you helping.
Smart guy.
I do appreciate it.
Absolutely.
Oh, I see, I see.
You know, I was thinking of the board. Required your help.
They had a pool when I went there. My dad worked there and he did not have a pool. They had these, but they did not have a pool. Maybe, I don't know. I haven't been to Bosie's in a long time. I used to run through there when I was a kid.
Yeah. Okay. It's nothing, I think, I was just talking.
So what have we taken down here? What's the problem here? Who's the judge? What is the judge really on? You know, you're talking to him. What's the, what's the problem? You second it, what's the deal?
I second the...
Why? What, what's, what's his problem? No, he asked for a reset, or she asked for a recess, but what's his deal? What's his problem? Problem?
You said, you know?
Did you say that? That's his boy. Good? Small steps, right? Go get the paper and the nail, and the nail, come on Ricky.
Yeah, yeah, so it's slow, it still has some veins, so when you move over, it's final cord and all that, it's, it's touching, it's touching the situation.
Good, how are you? How's Mike?
Great.
Sorry, the battery.
Battery showed full strength?
Yeah.
No, no, you got, you got, you got the power, you can sit on that if you want.
Is it approved then?
No shade, no rubber, right?
It's all like that.
Let's put some deep fried cheese sticks, potatoes, and chicken wings down there. That's gotta be our song, right? It's great.
Spend all this time to do...
It's almost the same sort of puzzle where it still has various... No, they still have some militaries there. There's a house, they have the huge hangars in the house, there's some five days, there's places that carry pins. The biggest point is they're all very smart. His head is stopped.
Do you know where the old officers club was?
Is there possibly other...
Can they come with you? No. Stay here, I don't want you with these. Living the good life. No kids, no what?
Good life. Where are the kids? Where are they? Oh, you're saying...
Living the good life. Hey, we got a good team.
We were, we were a little bit of firing the last year. No, I know. Because all those kids have gotten a year older and they're in the cream of the crop with the other teams.
Yeah, I mean, you know.
Like, what's he gonna expect?
So we had, I had six kids. Now you guys, you're out of here all along. This is the same. Same exact.
Yeah, yeah, they did, that's right.
Hey Gary, don't rush.
Yeah, give me the high son.
Just watch him.
Possibly.
Excuse me, gentlemen?
That's alright. Way to just become a...
Do you hear about that? I just saw it on the news report, I did not go to go.
Oh yeah, it was...
Really?
Cool. Your kids play?
No, they don't.
Sports only.
Sports only.
That's a, that's their instrument.
They're like, nah, I don't want to play in it.
Yeah.
Then I lose the study hall.
Study halls?
Please, that period goes for that, right? So my kids, study hall? How many do? My kids, my oldest kid went to indoor soccer leagues and he's playing basketball. Oh, my youngest is playing on a travel.
I don't know that myself.
Another guy, basketball.
Fly football. So he needs to get his work done at school.
To learn to get your homework done, that's what you want to do. If you want to keep playing soccer and basketball.
Yeah.
That's your deal.
That's true, sure. Yeah. Can't knock it. Enthusiasm, enjoy it.
Oh, that's, yeah, I saw the pictures, there was a ton of people there though, huh?
Oh yeah, it was big turnout.
Does Nathan play something? Oh. Do they all play together?
No, they went right around the room.
Did it hit the different grades?
Each group.
Oh yeah? That must have been pretty cool.
Two risers in chorus.
Another riser of...
Was it an air tail chorus?
Um, it's not just a chorus.
Very well, how are you? What are your songs? But I hear a good...
No, no, it wasn't.
Actually says a lot of the things. We are working hard, I think.
And that's it. So I think they have to go over here.
Yes.
But it was a great trip, the nice weather.
So he played beat?
Yep. Oh yeah. All the kids in his class were...
Yeah, that's awesome.
Enough to do two.
Obviously Josh and my, his son, my son play. And I would look over there and... The mod, Perdelle, has, had thirty-six.
Is that flag?
No, that's the next, the tack. No, the next one. It's the same, right?
That's a hundred and one, that's a hundred and sixty.
Play, but that doesn't even count that flag.
Oh yeah, and they had two even low.
That's a lot of kids. It's great. I think it's great.
We doing the crate this winter. Your kids play a crate too?
Oh yeah, my kids play. Myself and, myself and Mike, I have a team. Mike and I have a team. Yeah, we have our first team.
I'm speaking to you.
We got it on our team. Parliament, Bronson, Jerron, Slick.
We may or may not be returning to approval of the agenda. We are gonna step forward and start our meeting. We'll start with public comment. Could you please turn your microphones on if they are not? Oop, I won't.
If anybody needs help, I can jump on now.
Hit the hold mute button till the light turns green.
Are the orders on? We're good. Are the tape recorders on?
Are the tape recorders on? Should the light be red or green? Uh, she's copying off that... Okay.
Affirmative.
Okay. Very exciting. All right, so we're just gonna start with public comment today. We've set aside ten minutes for public comment. If anyone would like to approach the board at this time to make a public comment, you are allowed to do so. We'd appreciate it if you would state your name. So, Mr. Mann will share a synopsis of the policy for you.
So, I wanted to cover the public comment policy again. Actually, I learned something new at our last board retreat. The, uh, the, uh, what do you call it? The presenter, the, what do we call it? The person that was giving us the board retreat?
Facilitator.
Facilitator. So, he asked a question about if someone comes to the public comment and they start saying great things about some of the employees. Mr. Revival, you have great hair today. You know, Mr., whatever, right? And so I thought, "Oh, yeah, that's nice." And she said, "No." Like, "What?" So, they highlighted the fact that even if it's something good, the premise is that you cannot discuss people in public session. That all has to be done either through executive session or some other format. And even in act light, I mean, we give awards as part of a board announcement that we have on the, on the, on the agenda. But as part of public comment, or just like being at the board, we cannot address people specifically by name. So, in light of that, the policy, which is twelve-thirty stage, during open sessions, the presentation should be as brief as possible. Speakers may comment on any school-related matter during the open session. However, speakers presenting complaints must have first gone through the established complaint procedures. The board reserves the right to delay action for later meetings. The board will not permit public session discussion involving individual district personnel or students. Persons wishing to discuss matters involving individual district personnel or students should present their comments and their concerns to superintendent during regular business hours. So, anyway, just a matter of course of operations and... And something for us to, all of us to address. Having said that, anybody wants to be brave enough to step up for a comment?
Seeing that we have no takers. We're gonna move on to presentations. And we would love to introduce Mr. Mark Davy. Oh, sorry, Dr. Dark. Uh, Dr. Dark. I'm so sorry. Dr. Mark Davy and Mr. Eric Bell.
You guys want to reference the handout that was handed out?
Actually, I don't think that's...
Very good. Thank you. Question, lastly. For vice president Aaron, members of the board, administrators, staff, public and office students. Thank you for the opportunity for us to be here this evening. I'm very pleased to be here tonight as Bosse's district superintendent. And just moving forward, um, it's not my one call. Presentations.
We just had it out. It's like on the last one.
Okay. There you go. Okay?
The silver light is on the bottom left. We need remedial...
Yes.
The other left hand.
Get a deaf grader to come in and help us out.
You kidding? I can hurt one this much.
Ten-year-old.
Okay, great. All right, so now we have it. Thank you very much for being here this evening. I'm very pleased to be here this evening with Mr. Eric Bell. And it was helpful, I'll speak with Mike. As you know, Mr. Bell recently joined us from your school, where he was your treasurer, your capital projects administrator, I think your transadministrator. And joined us as of July first, and he's been doing a wonderful job. So we're so pleased to have him on board. So, I'm pleased to have him here this evening as our new assistant superintendent of management services. You see a brief overview of our agenda, and we'll move forward with that. As you look at the handout that you have in front of you, and it is a handout, it's a four-page newsletter regarding our capital project. There is an insert, and the insert is the eighteen-nineteen fact sheet. It's something that we've shared with the board previously. There are a few updates on the backside with some new programs and services. I'm not going to get into those this evening, but I do want you just to be aware of the breadth of all the services that we do offer. For the new board members, it really provides on the front a little overview about CDES, the foundation of our Bosse's. The Beacon Town is a very valued partner in one of our seventeen component districts. And also on the back, an overview of all of our different divisions and programs and services. So with that said here this evening, we'll move forward right into our presentation and look at the capital, or the facilities advisory committee item. And just to share with you, and you are aware that last year I came and gave, we gave a brief update about our facilities advisory committee, that the capital project plan that was underway. That committee did finish its work, and you will recall that we had four board members. We had almost thirty members, including our staff, administrators, and O and M staff, and all sorts of members of our staff involved. And we worked with Garrett Hamlin, who's your architect as well as our architect, and the construction manager to put together our final capital project summary that you see in front of you this evening. With that said, I will, we'll move right into the presentation. And the old adage, "A picture is worth a thousand words," is true here more than ever. What you're looking at on our presentation first and foremost, you see a shot of our roof. I'll share with you that our main campus, and that's the main campus for both CD Tech as well as special education, was originally built in seventy-seventy-one. This is true as well for our Mindville campus in Mindville and in Dillon. The roof that you see here is original from the building, and you see it is continuing to be, to serve as well. However, it's time, it really is in need of replacement. You see, you also see a second picture here, and then you see our HVAC units, both on top of the roof and internally inside. So in both of those cases, again, original from seventy-seventy-one for our roof and our main campus. As you look at the second set of pictures here, you see a picture of our swimming pool. Yes, we do have a swimming pool, but it's not an Olympic-sized swimming pool. It's not really much bigger than what you'd have in your backyard. It's considered a therapy pool. It's a pool that's used from the beginning of the day until the end of the day. And it's really, it not only serves as a therapy pool, but it also serves as an incentive for many of our students as well. It is in need of some significant renovation underneath, especially with all the filtration systems, which is a significant cost. The next picture that you see here is actually some shots from our bathrooms on the main campus. We'll share with you that not only are we looking to upgrade our bathrooms to bring them up to code and for handicap accessibility, but also as you look, for example, at this sink right here, that on the bottom is actually a foot pedal. So again, it's original from seventy-seventy-one. So many times when new students go into the bathrooms, they actually put their hands under the water and inspect motion activation. No water comes out, they have to actually step on the bottom foot pedal. That's just the, the brand. It was from the sixties and early seventies. The picture you see down here on the bottom is actually some windows from our U N and Dillon campus in Mindville. Not only is there a component of improving the energy efficiency with windows and doors, but there's also asbestos lining around the windows, so it's been highlighted as a need to be replaced, and something for our improvements in safety for the students. And lastly, you see a picture here of our entry vestibule as you walk into our U N and Dillon campus. As you look at that, you'll notice it's blushed. It's really well-maintained. There is, the floor is shiny, the tiles are in great shape. But as you walk in and during the day, those doors are locked. And you have actually a video system where you actually come up, buzz the camera. Once you identify yourself, you state your purpose, you then buzz into the building. However, as you walk into this building, you see the runner here, you actually walk in and you have complete access to the building. We do ask all of our guests to then walk down the hall and sign in at the main office. But one of the recommendations that we have as part of our capital project is to have improved safety for every vestibule in all of our campuses so that we have improved safety, especially today's day and time. So as we look at the capital project scope and the highlights, there are four, my main areas. First, safety and security. We just briefly discussed the end of vestibules. Traffic safety improvements is another area that we'll touch upon in a little bit. The second area is educational enhancements. Not only renovations to our special education facilities, but also outdoor educational space at the Mindville campus. We have critical infrastructure for the roof in the main campus, as well as the HVAC in the bathrooms, the pool improvement, and windows and exterior doors at the Mindville campus. And lastly, recurrent cost savings for the satellite campus and relocation of instruction, the Instructional Services Center. You notice that it's listed as ISC, and we have been renting our Instructional Services Center from Development Corporation for over thirty years as well, which is where we host all of our professional development, all of our staff training, our administrators, and all the workshops for many of your staff members to come and receive training from CDES. The last piece, and I'm gonna turn this over now to Mr. Bell, is just to share with you that our last major capital project, we know is opening nineteen ninety-five.
All right, so one of the pieces our facilities advisory committee really focused on was we're looking at a long-term impact for cost savings on our component districts. And that came to focus on the recurring costs. We have two leases right now. And your primary savings in the lease cost is you save on taxes. Well, as a Bosse's, we don't pay taxes. But we truly didn't have that savings. We're just paying recurring lease costs without any reinvestment back to us. We have no assets to go with it. So for over thirty years, we've leased the Instructional Services Center, totaling over a hundred thousand dollars a year. Also, we're looking at the purchase of our satellite campus, which is the picture on the bottom there. We're currently leasing that from the county at a hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars per year. Having together, we're close to two hundred and sixty thousand dollars every year. Or over twenty years, five point two million dollars. So keep that finger in mind as we go down through this presentation. But that's just in lease costs. Lease costs. Three other pieces with this. First is the Space and Instructional Services Center does not house our whole staff. So we don't have an eye on it. We don't have a large amazing. So when we wanna meet with all of our staff, we have to rent space. So we go to the West Side Ballroom, and we rent space just to meet with our staff. If we're holding large professional development, we can't house those. We have to rent space in order to house those large professional developments. The Instructional Services Center does not comment that. To the tune of over twelve thousand dollars a year, we are renting space in the Plattsburgh area. Also, let's talk about building it. So the state will not pay any Bosse's aid on capital work if we do not own the building. So if we were to have to construct a gun at our satellite campus without owning it, we would lose out on two million dollars in maximum cost allowances. So it's a significant impact if we were not to purchase the property prior to doing the work. The last piece is, we have an agreement right now with the county that every one of our lease payments comes off of the fair market value of the purchase price of the property. Fair market value of the property, one point eight million dollars. Bosse's has been there for just over ten years now. We have added value to that property. They will recognize in a purchasing agreement, if we do have approval, they'll recognize five hundred thousand dollars improvements that CBS has made. So we could purchase it for a total of one point three eight million, less the lease payments that we've been making. Now, this is similar to a lease loan agreement. Unfortunately, state net does not recognize a lease loan agreement. The only way we can purchase property, as a Bosse's, is through public referendum. So if the public says yes to this vote, we can purchase property. If they say no, these become straight lease payments. All that money we've had an agreement upon with the county goes out in the wash, and they're just straight lease payments, just as is. Yeah, go ahead.
Eric, you said it's one point three million less the lease payments. So is that one point three, your payment on one point three million plus the two fifty-nine? Is that what that is? I don't know what you meant by that.
So, the fair market value of property is one point eight eight. Five hundred thousand dollars improvement brings it down to one point three eight is what they would sell it to us for. We've made lease payments to the county at full value for two years now. So that hundred and fifty thousand dollars each year...
Got you.
Is coming, and that's off. So we're looking at July first, two thousand nineteen, the purchase of the property would be a million thirty-five thousand.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Next, we're gonna take an overhead view of that same property. So the south, the Plattsburgh satellite campus that we were just referencing is now highlighted in red. Seventeen and a half acres of land go with that property. The north hangar, the south hangar, as well as our administrative offices and two ballmarks. We have a request or a recommendation from our facilities advisory committee to purchase twenty additional acres to the north and west of our current satellite campus, this area right here. This north-south road is Military Turnpike. East west is Ruger Street. We're Ruger Street extension here. We have an opportunity to purchase twenty additional acres at four times below fair market value because the land is currently landlocked. Right now, Doris is building a four hundred thousand square foot facility at the old county terminal, which I'm sure you all are aware. The town has approved utilities to be run down to this location right here. So the town will be working on putting in utilities to start development in all of this area. Soon as that area becomes developed, that land is no longer landlocked. So right now, the town would subsidize it for us because once we own seventeen and a half acres, it's not landlocked to us. And the county would sell it to us at fair market value of landlocked property. So our last piece on that, what are we looking at to do with the twenty additional acres? Many audience have come up with our board in discussion, as well as our component districts. So we've talked about regional transportation. We've talked about regional bus garages. We've talked about expanding our CD Tech programming, as well as our autism program is expanding past the capacity of our main campus building. And we've also talked about renewable energy such as solar, similar to what you guys have done here.
So what you see here is just an overview of the south hangar, as well as where our current business offices are. I will add, okay, this is the current, this is the current outline of the facility that is underway. You'll notice that the top part here is in purple. That's considered educational space, and our design is being recommended. I will share with you currently, all of this area from here over currently is all educational space. So if you were to look at today's current design, this is all educational space. However, by keeping this purple area here, we generated an additional two million dollars in state aid on the capital project. You will notice, and we talked a little bit about our Instructional Services Center, in the middle of the recommended design, we have conference space. As you look at this design, our current Instructional Services Center houses about a hundred and fifty individuals when it's at capacity. There are four conference rooms. Those four conference rooms take up a little bit less than half of this space, and it's not the same design. This space here, as it is designed here, working with Garrett Hamlin and our architects, will have a capacity of between three hundred and fifty and four hundred people. That will allow us to have our opening day sessions there. We currently rent the West Side Ballroom. And we spend, I think, about twelve thousand dollars a year in renting extra resources. Why? So that we can have our staff and other events there. This would allow us to have, for example, the upcoming school boards meeting in the conference space. Why? We could also have educational programs such as the Model UN or the Spelling Bee and some of those kinds of things. But again, there would be dividers here, and the space would have a capacity of between three hundred and fifty and four hundred individuals. You'll notice this area here is also all converted to office space, as well as the district superintendent's office here, but therefore the Instructional Services Center, the human resources and management services area, as well as the business space. So this is currently hangar space. It would be converted to office space. And this is currently all office space that we would continue to maintain at that level. The next slide that you see is actually a shot for a small addition for the print shop, the warehouse, and a mailroom. the warehouse, and a mailroom. Now, we did not think it was wise for us to try to renovate office space to create a mailroom, a print shop, or a warehouse. I'll also share with you that when we think about our print shop, this is not just a print shop for C V E S. We also, we actually produce print services and print materials for all 17 school districts, many calendars, and all sorts of other type types handouts, including, for example, these brochures were done in our print shop. So it is a very, very active coaster that's used by all of our 17 school districts. So that is an area that we did, we do recommend that we add, and with that small addition. You'll also see on the next slide is a recommendation to add the steel substructure and concrete to the second floor. Why? Because with this and while we're undergoing construction, if we were to want to add this additional structure, we would have to tear out the existing offices that are being recommended to be created. We'd be looking at $1.5 to $2 million to put in that steel substructure for the second floor. There are no plans at this time in terms of for the expansion, but it would give us future expansion either for educational programming or future expansion for instructional services or other services for our B O Cs. And it is recommended that we do that at this time. You'll notice for the next step, and this is one of our other areas of priority, is to add traffic safety. Currently, this is the current design of our satellite campus, and this is where Mr. Bell talked about Military Turnpike and there's the Ruger Street Extension. Currently, the buses come in here, they enter, they drive around the parking lot, and they let students off right here. This hangar houses our aviation program. The students that are let off here then walk through the aviation hangar, they then walk outside across the parking lot. There's not much traffic, there's not traffic here except minimal traffic, but there are, this is where our heavy equipment and our welding programs are. So during the day, that's, there are students walking during the day, both directions there. The recommendation, and we have worked with Han Welding, which is located right across the street, they have agreed to give us an easement to this property, so that we could have a main entrance right here across from Han Welding, which would allow us to have the main entrance come in, we could drop students off at the north hangar, we could then have the buses come here and drop students off at the south hangar, and then exit on Ruger Street Extension. We would also have parking for the 300 to 400 people right in this area here. The other item that would allow us to have a two-way traffic to come in here, go around back, and then access where the mailroom and warehouse would be, it would also give us access to all of those 20 acres as well. So that's one of the areas that we've identified for significant traffic saving improvements. The second area actually has to do with our main campus. And just to put it in geographic area or geographic perspective, this continues to be the Military Turnpike, and then we have Route 3. Across the street is T V Bank, and this is Kenny Drugs right here, which is right across from our main entrance. If you've been at C V E S at 3:00 in the afternoon or 8:00 in the morning, 8:30, this is a very, very hectic and busy entrance. You have buses, students, as well as parents and staff, all trying to come in this main entrance. The buses will come in, they will then drive down here, they will drop students off for C V Tech, they will also, the buses will then travel down here, and this is where they let off the special education students. The recommendation is that we have a second main entrance here, which allows two-way traffic and to allow staff, parents, and students to reach the parking lots here, and also to alleviate much of the congestion, especially away from this intersection. This would also allow us to have the C V Tech buses come in, drop the students off here, travel down here, and then exit out this way as well. So it would allow us to have, and we do have a second entrance or a second exit here that's currently in use for our special education students. But again, significant safety improvements and also much better to avoid all the traffic congestion. And even as recently as the last few weeks, there was a three-car accident right at this entrance. Why? Because of all the congestion, you've got multiple people trying to come and go, and multiple lanes of traffic coming in at the same time.
All right, keep in mind that last picture showed a larger roof. Now, we're going to talk, that's the roof we're talking about replacing in the HVAC So there you can see the roof, and every single one of those specs, there's an HVAC unit on top of that roof that needs to be replaced. What does that cost? $29.85 million is the total cost of the project, the budget that's being voted upon. It includes the main campus roof and HVAC totaling $5.3 million, just over $5.3 million. Bathrooms, windows, and doors at our Mindville campus and our main campus, selected number of them, $1.4 million. Educational enhancements, just under $1.2 million. Safety and security vestibules, $400,000. We have the traffic safety plans that Dr. Davis just went over, $3 million. And then, I talked about a number earlier, $5.2 million in recurring costs. Relocation of I S C will have had a total of just under $5.5 million for that total project. At the bottom, you'll see we have incidental costs. So you're used to doing this because you just did a capital projects. These are slightly higher than you're used to, however, because B O Cs, we cover the cost of all 17 component districts when it comes to the project. So when we're talking the vote, B O Cs covers all the costs that flow through this project of all 17 sites. When we talk about the bond council, it flows through the project for all 17 districts when you go bond. Same thing with fiscal advisors, is the advisor of the project, just like it is Beacon Town. When Beacon Town is using fiscal advisors for the B O Cs capital project, those costs all flow through the project. That way, it does not hit your local budgets. So our internal costs are $5.7 million. It also includes architects, construction managers, and so on. Last piece is the acquisition of the satellite campus and the 20 additional acres, budgeted at $1.2 million. We just talked about where the satellite campus, seventeen and a half acres, was going to be $1,035,000, was the piece of that. So now, why we're here, we figured, what do you guys really care about? You have this sheet in your pamphlet, but you care about Beacon Town. So let's highlight Beacon Town here, let's watch Beacon Town for you. If you have anything, stop me if you have a question. We're going to go line by line. B O Cs aid, you only have 58.1% in B O Cs aid on this project. That B O Cs aid is paid at the time you make your payments on the project. If you were to pay fund balance, you would get B O Cs aid in that year you paid with fund balance. If you were to bond it over a length of time, when you make your debt service payment, you get aid on that debt service payment. So good news for Beacon Town here, B O Cs aid ratio for the new year has gone up. We only have 59.4%. We had to pick a point in time when we ran these numbers, so your numbers, you will have higher aid on this project based on 18, 19 numbers. Next, what is the share of the project? This is based on our water, resident weighted average daily attendance. We've talked about this multiple times. In all reality, it's the size of your school district in our B O Cs, 17 component districts. You take Beacon Town's resident weighted average daily attendance or your enrollment for the most part, divide that by the total our water of all 17 districts, you get a percent. That presents times the total, and you get a dollar amount, just over $4 million. What percent is that? 13.5%. These were based off 17, 18 numbers. 18, 19 numbers, we're not all in yet. Once all the school districts, we're waiting on one, gets all their state aid information's filed, we'll have numbers for the new years. Those new year numbers will be locked in as of the day of the vote. Your percent share is as of the day of the vote. Your aid on the project is $1.6 million, giving a net share reduced out of the aid just under $2.4 million. Two ways to finance this project. One is through DASNY, Donatorial Authority of New York State. C V S cannot hold bonds. We can't take out long-term debts, debt we're not allowed to per state law. So DASNY can hold the bonds for us as a project, and all the school districts get force fed, whatever that debt service payment is. It can range from five years to 30 years, and it's the same for all of the districts. You pay what is. It normally doesn't go light up because it is more expensive. Usually, it's about 1% higher interest. The other option is component district financing. That means that the districts choose how they finance a project. You can finance it from zero years to 30 years. That would be your choice. We chose at a point in time, we chose the middle, 15. So we're doing announcements on 15 years. If you were to bond it over 15 years, this is what it would look like. Next piece of this, keep in mind, we use an interest rate of 5%. The last bond sold in New York State for a school district was 2.95%. So we are 2% higher on our interest rate. We're looking at June of 2020 when these start to take effect. So we don't know where the interest rates are going to be at, and we didn't want low volume when we came in here. And keep in mind, 2% on 30 million, it's over $14 million. And we're a little higher than the current interest rate, a lot higher. Again, we didn't want low volume, so there's your share, $4 million hypothetical, average annual tax effort. If you were to bond it over 15 years, it's $231,000. 20 cents increase on your tax rate, again, if you were bonding it over 15 years, and it is hypothetical because the tax cap is in play, and Dr. Diggs is going to talk about that a little bit later. The impact on home, $100,000 S S value is $13.89, and then if you had an enhanced star, it's $6.59. All of this information is on our website. We broke it down by school district. We want to make it easy for your taxpayers to figure out, what is this going to cost me, and make it simple for them. They don't care about the rest of the schools, they care about them. So if you go to our website, you click on Beacon Town, you're going to get this information and more. So for example, we have like, what is Beacon Town's average enrollment at C V S? So over the last five years, you've sent 88 students to C V S. So you, your taxpayers, and you would be able to see that right on our website.
Eric?
Yes.
Mr. Mannix pointed out that the entire presentation is given us up there, is on our board portal if you want to go into more detail.
Thanks, Eric. What you see here is just a snapshot of our capital project timeline. We've talked in the past about the pre-ref phase. We are approaching the vote, which is December 11. And with that, all 17 component districts will have a polling site. If the vote is successful, it will then move into the design phase, the S E P approval, and the construction phase. And as Mr. Bell mentioned, there would be no financial impact on your district until the 2021 school year. So no effect on this year's budget, no effect on next year's budget, but it would be the following year if the capital project was approved. As you look at our list of public presentations, we've been making an effort to try to not only present to all of our component school districts, we presented to the chamber, the Workforce Development Board. We've been making some community presentations as well. We've been working to be out and be in the public, as well as to really advocate and really share this information out across the entire public, including articles in the newspaper, The Sun-Times, both in the north and the south, as well as working with our superintendents to try to get this information shared out on your website or linked from our website to yours, and also some other things that Mr. Bell will talk about.
So our vote's a little different than what you're used to, and we ask that you help share the message because it is different. It's one of those least restrictive environments for voting. The three requirements is you have to be a U.S. citizen, you'll be 18 years of age, and you have to have lived in our B O Cs, the whole B O Cs area, for at least 30 days preceding the vote. You do not have to be a registered voter. You can show up and vote on that day, whether, if you want to vote in Beacon Town or you live in Flatford, you can do it. If you live in Putnam and you want to vote in Beacon Town, you can do it. So this is one of the few times where your actual staff can all vote right here on site as long as they live in the B O Cs boundary. So we're rolling from new date. Also, I want to touch upon, we are doing paper ballots. It's a little different than what you're used to here at Beacon Town. So the intent was to have B O Cs use the voting machines. We ran some quick numbers, we got the $50,000 it was going to cost to have voting machines in all of our 17 polling sites, and we stopped. We didn't even reach the full of 17. We said $50,000 is way over the top, and we talked to our C S Os, and they said, we're good with paper ballots, that's okay. So this was a little different than you're used to there as well, but it was a large cost-saving method for us.
Now, you'll notice as well that we have a polling site in all 17 school districts. I'll share with you that there was part of our rationale for this, there was a motive to why we're using this approach, and it goes back to the governor's or the tax cap legislation. For when you have a capital project at Beacon Town or any one of our component districts, it does not count against your tax cap. For a B O Cs capital project, it actually does. There is legislation that was passed by the Senate and the Assembly last year. On the 31st of December, the last day of the calendar year, the governor vetoed the legislation. The rationale that he used was that there's no public vote on a B O Cs capital referendum, therefore I'm vetoing. There's no public input. This year, the Senate and the Assembly went back and actually both unanimously passed this referendum. They passed a legislation that said that the B O Cs capital project should be excluded from the tax cap. However, they added the wording that said, but in order to do so, there has to be a vote in every component school district. So therefore, we talked with our component, with all the superintendents, and we did say, we would like to hold a polling place in every one of your districts. So this allows us to have a polling site in every location, and it allows the community input from throughout our B O Cs, and we've been trying to communicate that widely across the entire B O Cs, but it would also allow us to meet the threshold that the governor used as a reason to veto it last year. Currently, the legislation is sitting on his desk, and it was passed unanimously by both the Senate and the Assembly this year. Okay, just in terms of the capital project information, if you do go to our website, there's extensive information specifically about Beacon Town, as well as each of our component districts. There's the handouts that you have, as well as the flyers, there's the in-depth brochure about our Facilities Advisory Committee, and all the resources that we can have. We're even adding a new F A, really an F A Q, really to where we've had many people ask questions, we've had board members ask questions, and we've tried to add those to our website to be able, so that everyone can share the information and have their questions answered. Okay, lastly, I'd just like to thank you for the opportunity to present. We are happy to answer questions, and I know both Mr. Bell is very knowledgeable, and we really tried to be as thorough in the presentation, but also break it down so it would be as helpful as possible to you as a board.
So I have a question. The last time you guys were here to present, obviously that was a year ago, so obviously these numbers weren't even close to what they are seeming to get right now, but that range was 15 to 30 million dollars. Obviously, now we're at $30 million. We have a vote less than a month away. I'm assuming we're going to be pretty close to what these numbers are, Mr. Bell? I would assume.
Yeah, first, I would say I'm sorry, this is the first time you're hearing of the number. We've been trying to get the word out ahead of time. We were on the front page of the press, we were in The Sun, we've really been trying to push it. I'm sorry, first off, that it's a surprise to you, and we're bumping up our communication efforts to really blit out the meaning so that it's not a surprise to everybody. So first off there. Next is, when we did our Facilities Advisory Committee, they came up to a dollar amount of what the work that they recommended would cost, and it was over $40 million. So the needs were at over $40 million in talking to our C S Os and our board, it really, they said, no, we need to get it down below $30 million. We've already been out to the public and said, it's between 15 and 30, and we started to remove the non-necessities, or something that we could attack in-house. So that's how we were able to get down to the $29.85 million, but the needs actually exceeded $40 million at the time.
Thank you.
Does anyone else have any questions at this time?
I'd just like to take one moment and acknowledge Mr. Maron. I know he's your board vice president, but also serves a dual role, and that is on our B O Cs board. He is an active member, who is active not only on our board, but also with your board as well, and even with N S P A, and is our voting representative for our region as well. So we're very pleased to have him as a partner and have him serve in a leadership role, represents your students well, as well as all of our component districts. We thank you, Mr. Maron, for your leadership, and didn't know if there's anything else you would want to add from your other role.
No, it's a pleasure. You're talking about the state stuff?
Well, how about either for the capital project or any other thing you'd want to add?
No, I'm just happy to be able to be able to get a perspective from being on that board, to be able to try to answer questions here, and likewise. You know, I know that I open my mouth up at that board meeting just as much as I do here, and try to get as knowledgeable as possible, so, thanks for your time.
Thank you. Lastly, I'd also like to just acknowledge your superintendent, who serves as the vice chair for our Health Insurance Consortium, well-regarded with our chief school officers and brings a lot of input, is also serving as our N S C S and New York State Council's school superintendent's representative. And so thank you, Mr. Mannix, for your leadership and your continued work with all the chief school officers and helping to lead our consortium.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Being that we are having an unusual evening, we need to go into executive session. I apologize in advance. Do we have a written resolution to go into executive session? Okay.
Who's going to talk?
No, the pending legal matters.
Okay.
So...
It is resolved that the Board of Education enter into executive session to discuss legal matters.
May I make a suggestion?
Yes.
Instead of going into executive session, why don't we recess the meeting for a few minutes, so the board can receive counsel from me to the board on a pending legal matter?
Okay, just to recess?
Yeah, and we'll go in to receive the advice of counsel on litigation.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. May I make a motion to have an additional recess this afternoon, or this evening?
Motion.
All right, we have a motion. I need a second.
Second.
Okay. Any questions or discussion?
I just want to make a motion to remove myself from that meeting, since I am part of the litigation.
All right. I don't, does he need a motion, or can he just abstain?
I'm just abstaining.
Yeah, I think he could just not attend.
We would not have him in that meeting anyway.
Okay.
So it's kind of moot.
All right, okay. All right, seeing that we have a motion, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
I'm not exactly sure how long our recess will be, but we'll be as quick as possible. We are now in recess.
All right, being that we came back from gathering legal advice, and we had a recess, we can step right back into the meeting. We're going to go back to approval of the agenda. It's resolved that the superintendent of schools recommends to the Board of Education to approve the agenda with the removal of item seven D. May I have a motion, please?
Motion.
I'll second.
Mike?
Was that Ed?
Mm-hmm.
And Mike? Any questions or discussion?
That removal is per court order.
All right. No questions, no discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Noes? Abstains? One that would be used for apple? All right, let's get back to where we were. All right, so we move next into reports. Reports will start with Mr. Mannix.
With all the walking around and shuffling, it was my agenda that has my notes on it. But I think I can recall, one was, I know Mike Agar was there. We had the mega concerts held in the gym, where our music department, and we had every student that's either in a singing group or in an instrumental group perform in front of a packed house. And we had every music teacher there, and a lot of volunteer teachers, and just a lot of teachers actually just watching the students perform. And I thought it was absolutely outstanding to have that back. It's the first time they've had that here in nine years. I tried to see the...
And Holden's there too.
Oh, yeah, I haven't seen that. Okay, so that's great. I thought it was outstanding to bring that back to Beacon Town. It was just a great, great night. And then, the, on the agenda, there are tax certs from the mall, large payment for the Pyramid Mall court battle that has taken a couple of years, and the judge did agree with, it's Chamber Center's not pyramid anymore, and you get, judge agreed, and the arguments of the town and the support that the school district provided were unavailing, and we've had the money in reserve, so it's a huge loss. It's a huge payment to the Chamber Center's North, but it's a huge loss to the taxpayers, because it's once again a big tax benefit to a large corporation in the town of Flatburt, and that money, that payment will not be just lost. It'll be made up by all the taxpayers. The people who, everybody else who pay more pyramid, or Chamber Center North will pay, will pay far less. And I do have a couple of other things on there, but I can't recall. I will recall if I can find my agenda, so I'm going to just pause at this point.
All right. We appreciate Mr. Cameron Kuchar's executive student board members dedication to our student district, but he has gone home for the evening.
So Cameron, I will give you, Cameron has updates, which I'm actually just going to put into my next update, all the nice things he reads. He's probably got the mega concert in here. But he did want me to read this, and I hadn't read it yet, so bear with me. "The high school was able to welcome back the environmental club this year. Mrs. Berto was advising as a volunteer, and the club president has been elected as Cameron Kuchar. He and Olivia Acosta and Pino are the main counterparts in reviving the club. In the club, we hope to intensify the recycling efforts of Beacon Town District Line. We also look to become a certified green school by the end of the year. As the club proceeds, we will try not to make your job difficult, but keep in mind, the club looks to continue after the school year, so it will most likely have to be board-approved. The club hopes to spread awareness by presenting at the next faculty meeting, which is great. And not too long ago, maybe three years ago, the student council, or the National Insurance Society took on our recycling effort, and you'll see those recycling boxes around the school. This parallels pretty well with our energy performance contract, and we'll see what they think about the savings we're already making with our energy usage." That's what I have, all right.
Next, our committee reports, and if you guys wouldn't mind, I'd appreciate it. Policy could go first?
Sure. So we met and updated the harassment session that we had spoken about at the previous board meeting. Remember, we quickly adopted based on, based on the state law. So we went over those again, for the updated modifications. So went through that. And then, the focus after that was on the code of conduct. So the policy needs to be revised, and so we decided to put together a way to get some feedback from stakeholders at each one of the buildings, committees from each one of the buildings, and then we have representatives come to, come to the rest, and have a process to get all the feedback on improving the code of conduct, and then brought to the board. The biggest, biggest issues concerned, of course, are everything from tobacco, cigarettes, vaping, policies involving searches, all those, all those things that are student-handled. That's, that pretty much kind of summarizes it.
All right. Audit committee also met. We discussed our August and September two thousand eighteen financial reports. We also discussed and received an update on our food service program. As today's breakfast, or I shouldn't say as today, I apologize, total breakfasts and lunches served over the, a month of September were twenty thousand eight hundred and fifty-one and twenty-four one hundred and twenty-three lunches. This was a two percent discount, decrease over last year. Hopefully, we'll make those percentages back. Also, we discussed a significant difference in the cash balance for prior year due to the receipt of a four million dollar ban for worksite related to the cap project. Other things we discussed were incarcerated youth program, preschool, I'm sorry, pre-K for three-year-olds, budget and expenses, FMLA purchase, FMLA and purchases made out of season, example, things like the mower deck and things like that, when we bought them off-season to save money for the kids. That was our basic audit committee. All right. Next is minutes. Resolved that the superintendent of schools recommends to the Board of Education to approve the following minutes. May I have a motion, please?
A motion.
So we have Mike. Mark seconds. Any question or discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any noes? Any abstains?
No.
Resolution?
No.
You say no?
Yeah.
Okay. Did you get Andy said no?
No.
It's resolved that the superintendent...
Sorry.
You okay?
Yeah.
Can you drink?
No.
It's resolved that the superintendent of schools recommends to the Board of Education to approve the CSC, CPSC, and five oh four recommendations dated November thirteenth two thousand eighteen. May I have a motion, please?
Motion.
Thanks, Pauline. Second?
Second.
Mike? Any question or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Noes? Abstains? Resolution passes. It's resolved that the superintendent of schools recommends to the Board of Education that the following personnel resolutions on this consent agenda, resignations and appointments be and are hereby approved. May I have a motion?
A motion.
Mike? Second?
Second.
Pauline? Any question or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any noes? Abstains? Resolution passes. It's resolved that the superintendent of schools recommends to the Board of Education to adopt the following policies. May I have a motion, please?
Motion.
Mark, second?
I'll second.
Mike? Any question or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Noes? Abstains? Resolution passes. It's resolved that the superintendent of schools recommends to the Board of Education that the following miscellaneous resolutions on this consent agenda, election, excuse me, election services agreement memorandum of understanding with BSSA two thousand nineteen to two thousand twenty, budget calendar and school board election, and SEQRA?
SEQRA.
SEQRA. Resolution be and are hereby approved. May I have a motion, please?
A motion.
Mike?
Second.
Pauline? Any questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Noes? Abstains? Resolution passes. It's resolved that the superintendent of schools recommends to the Board of Education that the following resolution on this consent, sorry, on this consent agenda, financial reports, tax certs, tax collectors' reports, and internal audit reports be and are hereby approved. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Ed? Second?
I'll second.
Mike? May I have a roll call? Sorry, any question or discussion? Roll call, please.
Douglas Booby?
Yes.
Andrew Brockway?
No.
Kathy Buckley?
Yes.
Michael Higginhorn?
Yes.
Holden Lehman?
Yes.
Ed Maron?
Yes.
Mark San?
Yes.
Pauline Stone?
Yes.
It's resolved that the super, oh, I'm sorry. Are we getting back into executive session?
There was some discussion. I think we put out an email, an email to go into executive session to discuss a recent hire. Is that correct?
Yes, I do. Do we still want to discuss her?
Well, it's probably pending legal. There's probably a pending legal matter now.
Does that mean that we still can't, that we can't?
We could, we can...
That we can discuss the, the events of the November sixth meeting without what was in the meeting?
Well, we're not talking about the...
Yeah.
I'm not talking about November sixth. We're talking about the people personnel director.
Oh.
Yes. So we could, we could go into executive session as a unit.
Sure.
But I, but I would give, I would lean on you to make a recommendation on who should be in executive session.
Certainly.
And since we said, I'd be more willing to update the board on what we, what we've done.
That's a catch.
Well, it's, you know, this piece of litigation that was handed to the board an hour and a half ago certainly encumbers some discussion, because there are multiple matters that are cited in it, and your discussion in executive session of this issue that you had planned to discuss is now been made a part of this. So, you know, I think that would have been a very fruitful conversation for the entire board prior to this being filed. At this point, I think it might still pay to have that discussion with the board in executive session to discuss employment of particular individuals, but I'm not sure that Mr. Brockway is litigating against the board to be included in that discussion.
I'd object to that, because I'm not litigating the hire of this individual, and I'd ask that you put together legal advice in the writing as to why you can't, because I've researched case law that says that individuals that are members of the board can participate in executive session only when it doesn't pertain to the individual. My suit is against Mr. Mannix and Ms. Buckley and the board for hiring this individual to begin with.
So the board's heard my advice?
I mean, I'll just resolve another action tomorrow if you'd slowly...
Or if it's not going to be very productive, we could pass on the executive session.
Technically, it is Mr. Manix's, Mr. Mannix's responsibility to manage personnel. It would have been nice to give the board a full update on what has taken place so far. But like you said, we're in a diff, much more difficult position now.
I'm okay with following counsel's advice. That's where he's, that's where he's here.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, I mean, and I'm, like I said, you know, this, this document's fairly thick, and I was only able to, you know, look at the essential elements with respect to the immediate order before that addressed what your actions evening. I note that there is a provision in this document indicating a challenge to board action with respect to recommend, the recommendation of, as it says, a person of questionable, and so on and so on.
Isn't that what we're going to talk about?
Yeah.
I guess I'm making a presumption as to whom that applies. You know, like I said, this is a fairly, fairly robust document that I have not been able to completely review since, since showing up here. So that's, that's what's guiding my advice to at this point.
It does apply to that, to that person, to that, to that position. The discussion we're going to have applies to that position.
Right. I would presume that that discussion would also generate potential response to the litigation. That's sort of where I'm, where I'm coming from.
Correct, without doubt.
Correct, definitely. So, you know, that's, that's why I'm...
I'll step down, and then I'll file an action against you again tomorrow.
Against me?
Yeah, you're the one that's making, you're agreeing with him.
I'm, I'm just trying to provide the board, you know, counsel with respect to this, and there's, you know, the board is on the, as they say, the right side of the bill. In other words, the action against whom the matter is brought. Mr. Brockway is bringing it against the board, so he's adverse to the board. So a discussion of the action would, I, would, in order for me to give advice to the board as the defendant, I can't really have the plaintiff in the room with respect to that advice. So...
And in support of that, I can honestly tell you, I've spent hours and hours and hours on the phone, on the phone with NISP. NISP says, when in doubt, follow your legal counsel's advice.
So this is, you know, this is not a matter to purposely exclude or include anybody or not, you know, it's just to...
Are the tape recorders still on?
Yes.
Okay. So you just say what your reasoning is for your advice, so I can... Okay, so can you just say what your reasoning is for your advice so I can use that in the future, why do you think I shouldn't be allowed in?
We just did. So it's up to the office of the board. We've been threatened and now served and investigated and everything for the last since July. You know, if we, if we pause every time we hear that, mission accomplished, we're not gonna get, you're not gonna know anything of any value, so.
Well, it all started with you and Kathy investigating me, so I'm too shy.
Okay.
Let's go back.
Let's not talk about personnel.
Let's go back to the topic at hand. Okay. The full board was informed that we were having an executive session concerning specific information for a specific position that the board needs to know. You put yourself in a position by bringing this to the table of being an...
You put yourself in a position...
A plaintiff, okay, but you're talking while I'm talking, and right now it's my turn. Because of this, that does not mean that the work of the Board of Education or the district ceases to happen. I am in agreement with Mr. Gerhart and New York State School Board Association to follow his recommendations. How are we going to resolve anything if we continue to stop? Because one person out of what used to be nine disagrees. If we were to take a vote, the resolution would pass.
You can take a vote, I would like you to take a vote, so I can further have that as well.
And can I finish, since you finished?
Actually, you know what, we shouldn't have actually been having a conversation right now. So do we, we would take, make a motion to go into executive session to make this discussion. It shall, it shall either pass or it should fail. If it fails, we do not have it. If it passes, we continue on with our meeting the way we had planned. As far as Mr. Brockway not being allowed into this particular executive session if it passes, do we need to write a specific resolution excluding him, or are we permitted to just request he not be there?
I, I would, I, my experience is typically the latter is what occurs, and, you know, I'm trying to make sure everybody's doing the right thing, and I'm not sure why Mr. Brockway a moment ago said that he would recuse himself from a conversation about the litigation he just brought, and now not want to recuse himself from the very same, from a matter within the same litigation. So the inconsistency there is puzzling to me. I'm not asking for an explanation, just sharing with you that, that inconsistency is puzzling to me. So with the same rationale that we used earlier with respect to me giving guidance to the board with respect to the agenda and the items on the agenda, and Mr. Brockway not being a party to that conversation, because he's a litigant against the district, I would, I would say that would seem to follow for the same reason that the matter that you'd be discussing in an executive session is also, is also subsumed in that same, same litigation, so.
Can I respond?
I defer to the board president as to how you want to handle any further conversation with the board on this.
How about we make that motion? And if it passes, we go into executive session?
Is there discussion on the motion?
There always is discussion on the motion. Okay. All right. All right, it's resolved that the Board of Education appoint two as a clerk pro temp. I'll be clerk pro temp. A motion please?
Clerk pro temp?
Mm-hmm. Okay, thank you, babe. Second.
Second.
Discussion or question concerning the clerk pro temp? All in favor?
Aye.
Noes? Resolution, sorry, abstains? Resolution passes. It's resolved that the Board of Education entered two executive session to discuss...
Pending legal matter and personnel, and I would be, I would be the reason on the agenda, I don't have the intended funding.
I don't have it, it's stopped for a discussion.
You know what's on there?
Employment, the employment history of a particular individual. Okay, do you want me to rephrase that, or is that close enough for everyone?
Yep.
Okay. May I have a motion please?
Motion.
And Mark is second. Discussion?
So responding to Mr. Gerhart, I said that I was recusing myself from discussing the litigation. Litigation discusses not this individual, it discusses the hiring and the allegations against the superintendent, what he knew and what he said before we hired him.
Okay, you can't talk about a specific person?
I didn't mention anyone's name.
How many superintendents do we have in this room?
So you're telling me that I can't mention the superintendent's name?
Yes, actually, he's an employee of the district.
So I was referencing that, I was not mentioning the person that is in the litigation, so I don't think that it's fair to say that I recused myself when I was, when you were discussing the litigation earlier. I would point again to case law that says that there has to be a specific reason for going into executive session. By going into executive session, you're not even referencing the litigation that you're supposed to be referencing pursuant to law. Doug may get, differ from me on that.
So I think the board's clear that the, the litigation being discussed in executive session is the matter of the application. Andrew D. Brockway is a member of the Beaton Town Board petitioner for judgment and relief pursuant to CPLR Article 78 against the Beaton Town Central School District Court of Education et al., index number 201B-00019032.
And further, that I would like to ask our counsel if this is now a public document that can be shared since it's been filed with the Land County Clerk.
I would have to say that you brought a, an action against the school district, so yes.
So the entire...
That, I'm not sure, no, anything is always recommended, you know that for sure.
So there's a motion before the board that we seconded, there was discussion, so perhaps that matter can be addressed before we go in.
Thank you, I was just gonna say, we gotta focus on, on the motion on, on the table, or the question before us. As part of my discussion, part whether right or wrong of the action, we have to be consistent with our approach with, we said from the beginning, providing counsel so we can be advised, try to be as, as appropriate as possible. I don't think we should deviate from that. Since we started doing that, we should continue doing that, whether it's right or wrong, we should follow in our advice.
Is that end of discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Noes? Abstains? Resolution passes. All right, we're going into executive session.